Welcome to the November 15th City Council meeting. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regalia for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hewland, here.
Parker.
Present.
Kling.
Here.
Schroder.
Present.
She's on Zoom.
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Gwen, can you hear us?
I can. I'm not muted.
Southall, here. Marchant.
Present.
Mayor Pepper.
Present. Thank you. All right. Before we get started, we have a special announcement. So I'm going to ask Brian Waller to join me in the front and the Waller family to join me in the front. For those of you that don't know, today is the last council meeting for Brian Waller, and I have a resolution honoring his service. So we invited his family to join us for this. I will read it. Whereas Ryan Waller served as Indianola City Manager from January 18th, 2016 to November 27th, 2021. And whereas Ryan utilized the four Cs: communication, collaboration, customer service, and community engagement in all aspects of his work. And whereas Ryan was a mentor and a leader to everyone in the organization, educating and motivating staff to complete the city's mission in order to make Indianola a great place to live and work. And whereas he used training, tools, and treats to elevate the professional competency of the staff. And whereas he used policy and honesty as a cornerstone in making decisions and expected those around him to do the same. And whereas he challenged staff to think beyond how has it always been done, which led to new policies that benefited the community. And whereas Ryan and his family have been passionate about and heavily involved in this community. And whereas the community of Indianola greatly appreciates the work and sacrifice put forth by Ryan in fulfillment of his duties. And whereas in honor of the city manager, who has changed things in this organization for the better, we bid a fond farewell and wish you and your family success in your new community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the elected and appointed bodies and staff of the city of Indianola that Ryan Waller and his nearly six years of dedicated service to the Indianola community are hereby recognized and appreciated. In witness whereof, I hereunto send my hand and seal this 15th day of November, 2021.
Hello?
Hey Gwen.
Oh, you can hear me now, can't you?
Yeah, you're gonna have to turn down your volume. Hello?
Okay. I can hear my echo.
Yeah, you'll have to turn on your computer.
It's on my computer. Hang on.
I should have been able to hear you.
We'll move now into public comments. If there's anybody here that's wishing to speak about something that is not on the agenda, now is your time to come forward. You would fill out a form in the back and then state your name and your address for us, and we will handle that as you do that. Seeing none, hearing none, we're moving on into our agenda. First up is consent agenda. We need to pull approval of claims B, so that we'll pull that first. Anything else need to be pulled?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second. Okay.
Councilmember Hewland.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Kling.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Southall.
Aye.
Marchant.
Aye.
Motion carries, and then we need an approval of the claim. Jackie.
Councilmember Marchant.
Aye.
Hewland, refuse. Parker.
Aye.
Kling.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Southall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And Ryan, can you just give us a few highlights of the consent agenda?
I sure can. I'm just hearing an echo. Um, so I'm there setting up actually two public hearings. You're paying some bills for the streetscape project, the wastewater treatment plant project, and one of the lift station projects that we have going on, third reading of the driveway ordinance, as well as the residential residential inspection program, which is required for communities over 15,000. We have a couple other second readings. See here, renewing the parking lot lease with First Baptist Church and Trinity United Presbyterian Church. We've got some reports that Andy has to get into the state, so you're approving those. And then some of the final stuff for Valley, the Valley Place reconstruction project. It's a name of you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, into council reports we go. Presentation of the fiscal year 2021 audit by Robert Endress and many company. Hi, Robert. See you.
Again, my name is Robert Endress. I'm an audit manager with Demman and Company. I've done this a few times now, but it's always face so familiar. I do must say I'm happy to be here in November rather than March, so it's a one purpose here that staff should be very happy about, too. I'm just going to go over briefly with you the financial statement audit for fiscal 2021. You believe, I believe you all have that document in front of you. It's a good 60 pages long. It's kind of dense. So we're going to do this over a powerpoint presentation today instead. I'll make this a little bit more digestible for you. Along with myself, Dave Ellis is the audit partner for this engagement looking at the city, and one other staff member was involved in this year's audit as well. Just a recap really. We'll go over our audit report, our independent audit report. We'll get some very brief financial information from this fiscal year, and we'll talk about controls and communications with governance here as well. Beginning with the independent auditors report, which you can find in their document towards the, towards the front of that document. This is a reminder that these financial statements are those of management, management's responsible for ensuring they comply with professional standards and that they accurately reflect the cash basis statements that this team prepares. And then controls are in place to support the accurate presentation of these financial statements. Our responsibility to perform an audit in accordance with our professional standards and to express an opinion on the accuracy of those statements. And we, to do that, we do a series of testing, recalculating balances, substantiating transactions, independently confirming transactions, and inquiries of management along the other items. Through the course of our work, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on these financial statements, which is the highest level assurance that our profession provides. Diving into those statements briefly here, this is just a year-over-year government-wide look at revenues, cash basis, and expenses. Obviously, $56.7 million in receipts is a substantial growth of the prior period. Bond proceeds, of course, being a big driver there with the wastewater treatment plant. Total expenditures for the fiscal year, $46.3 million, up from $25.8 in the prior period. Again, you can see about $20 million growth for that very last item, which is almost exclusively related to the wastewater plant. In total, change in that position to the good of $10.3 million. That's not sustainable. That's again, bond proceeds coming in that haven't been spent out yet, so you'll see that revert in future periods. So that was a government-wide look at financial statements. Of course, the city really focuses on those governmental funds as its kind of core operating funds. This is a quick snapshot on those fund balances at fiscal year end in those governmental funds. You can see there general fund balance of just over $10 million. Urban renewal of $5.3, local office sales tax, $6.4 million dollars. One metric that we look at to ensure the fiscal stability of that general operating fund is number of days on hand for expenses. General rule, very general, three to six months is considered a healthy general fund balance. The city's quite healthy, flirting with 350 days at this point, so well over that six month. Along with our work on the financial statements themselves, we do look at internal controls as part of that, that audit process. We don't test or do an audit of those controls. We do evaluate them to help us inform our decisions on how we test those financial statements. If we identify deficiencies in those controls, we have responsibility to evaluate those and vet them and bring them up to governance. So in the back of your report, you will see that work on internal controls. We have this one recommendation this year related to payroll filings, and not what we consider to be a very substantial item, called a significant deficiency rather than material weakness. So just one item there that we had discussed with management, and they are working to evaluate that at final resolution calls. Along with that, we do look at several compliance requirements the state asked us to look at to ensure that the city is compliant with a series of items that the state considers to be very important. We had one minor item there related to budgetary expenditures over, over budget. Again, that's a very common one we see in local cities. Not one we consider to be very substantial or worthy of a whole lot of stress or concern. With those stress of the staff, we're very good about keeping an eye on those budget expenditures. Finally, there is also a three-page letter that we issued with our audit report. This is intended to be an opportunity for us as your auditors to speak directly to members of governance. Or is it opportunities for us to discuss what we consider to be key, key factors in the audit. Frankly, it's a very boring letter, and that's a good thing. You don't want exciting governance letters. That's when we really expect you to perk up, start paying attention. I don't have a whole lot of excitement there. But a couple of things just to bear in mind, there were no new accounting policies this year. The policies and practices that were in place last year are overwhelmingly being used again this period for these statements. Accounting estimates are part of all financial statements, and the cities do indeed have some estimates in them. We evaluate those estimates for reasonableness that management's made, and we have included that management's estimates in these financial statements already reasonable. And then probably most importantly, we have no disagreements or no challenges or fit through the audit. Staff worked very hard to make our job easy, which we're very, very grateful for, and the audit went quite smoothly. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this document or audit process or anything else that, that the council might have.
I'm just glad it went well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Not that I was surprised.
All right. Next up is our treasures report. Go join me.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, this is the fourth month of the 21, 22 year, and it should be in the packets. The, we've talked a little bit over the last three, four, five, six months about how the fund balances have gone since a year ago. And Robert had up there 350 days, but that's phenomenal. That's a great position to be in. The only thing unusual about this report, the one ended September, October 31st, is in the month of October, there were four payrolls, three payrolls. And the last one was on the 29th, and you did not get reimbursed from IMU until, I guess it was November 9th or whatever it was. So that does make a difference, and hopefully they're good for it. Anyway, the only other thing would be down in the lower left-hand corner, there are a list of all the investments, and we had about $44.5 million. And a lot of that has to do with those downtown streetscape, Hillcrest, K Street, and one other fund that makes the cause of that be so huge at the end of October. The interest rates are fundamentally the same they were a year ago, very low. With that, that would be my report for you all.
Precious report.
Same.
Councilmember Kling.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Southall.
Aye.
Marchant.
Aye.
Hewland.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Thank you, Doug. Next up, Metro Advisory Report, Councilmember Plank.
Yeah, I'd like to invite you all over to my house where I read it to you because it's on my desk, so we won't have one tonight.
Put it to the next agenda. Thank you. All right, John Parker, how about a greater delay? You mentioned a visitor's bureau.
Yes, yes. I don't know how it made it over there, but it did, and I apologize, Jackie, because I was all excited to tell you that I had a report. I will have it at the next council meeting, so.
Okay. These things happen. All right. Next up is a resolution appointing interim city manager.
Motion, second.
For those that don't know, we are, we are appointing himself as interim city manager. Questions, comments? Jackie.
Councilmember Marchant.
Aye.
Hewland.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Kling.
Aye.
Aye.
And Southall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then we have a resolution appointing a city clerk.
Second.
Questions, comments? Jackie, please.
Councilmember Parker.
Aye.
Kling.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Southall.
Aye.
Marchant.
Aye.
Hewland.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you both, Charlie and Jackie. We appreciate all that you do for us. Next up is mayor's report. I have a couple of things. One is just pleased to invite all the community to join us. There's a going away party for Ryan Waller this Friday from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Activity Center. That's the Parks and Rec Building. So if you can stop by, say hello, say goodbye. We would love to see you, so please, please join us. Also, for those of you that may not know, our past Indianola Public Library Director, Charles Ginder, died November 2nd, and I have just a few words that they put together for me, which was very kind of them.
Right.
Charles Ginder was the director of the Indianola Public Library from 1970 to 1997. When he joined the library, it consisted of just 20,000 books organized by a manual card catalog system. Waller kids will explain what that is later. During his 28-year tenure, he was responsible for many library improvements, including the addition of vinyl records, CDs, DVDs, a microfilm reader, oh my goodness, and public access to computers. Under his leadership, the library successfully weathered a major censorship challenge, installed its first computerized library system, and raised funds to build the library at 207 North B Street. Remarkable legacy.
Most people don't know he was an art major.
And he was an art major. How about that?
And put the first Band-Aid on the spoiler.
All right. Well, our thoughts are going out to his family that we are grateful for his past service. Next, I just wanted to share some comments that I'd like to make in regards to some recent actions. So that I took regarding the IMU board. It is important to remind everyone that Indianola's mayor and city council are elected to represent all citizens. The IMU board is appointed. Our community has many infrastructure needs, especially those utilities under the control of IMU. I wanted to keep this issue and my concerns private, but given the public attacks on my character and intentions, I would like to share the basis for my decision, which has been in the works for 12 months as I have been mayor, which called for the resignation of Adam Voits and Mike Roska as within my jurisdiction as mayor and prescribed by law. The following rationale for removal is listed in my November 4th letter that was sent to both individuals. These points are based on my attendance at IMU board meetings, conversations, interactions, and feedback directly to me from IMU customers. Here are the problems not addressed by Adam as chair of IMU and Mike as the former chair. The mishandling of the elation conversion. That's the new IMU database. The $600,000 system is very costly, but couldn't provide the city with the reports we needed to balance our accounts. Nine, significant findings in the fiscal year 2020 audit of IMU's financials, and the glossing over of these when questioned. Lack of a strategic plan. IMU has not had a strategic plan for five years. This is an important instrument to help guide planning and investing in failing infrastructure. For example, as many of our citizens experience, we've had numerous water main breaks in 2020. I've heard the average life of our water mains are 60 years old. Our water lines are old and failing, and as apparent by the major fix required on the square renovations. Another example, IMU repeatedly transferred service rights to other water utilities, largely due to the aged and undersized infrastructure, and subsequently gives revenue to a different water supplier, which ultimately impacts us. Lack of communication with city officials, city council, citizens, and other representatives, and had what I believe was an inappropriate use of closed session in an IMU board meeting. The continual push for the separation of the city and the city-owned utility, which adds costs and reduces customer service and collaboration. A desire to change staffing and processes, which affects both IMU and the city, and not discussing with city council before decisions are reached. Again, adding costs and lacking efficiencies that would be important to taxpayers. Disengagement. Despite several years of meetings and updates, Adam claimed in May, to me and to John Parker, that he had no knowledge of the Streetscape project until January twenty twenty-one. This is incomprehensible for a leader of a multimillion-dollar public entity. Without professionalism, accountability, transparency, and communication, IMU costs will continue to rise, and our community will not be able to sustain the growth it has generated over the last few years. The success of IMU is incumbent upon an effective and engaged Board of Directors. They serve by appointment of the mayor, and these two individuals are not upholding their responsibilities. Simply put, I want more for our city. We need active participants in our government. I have a proclamation to read. I got some grief last time for reading one about Veterans' Day. I did not declare Veterans' Day a holiday. The federal government did that. I wanted to recognize our veterans. Today, I'm recognizing Giving Tuesday. This comes from, very much from my heart. I work in this field, and I just want to recognize and draw attention to the importance of Giving Tuesday. Whereas, Giving Tuesday was established as a response to the commercialization and consumerism of the post-Thanksgiving Black Friday shopping on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas, Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they can give. And whereas, it is also a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for impactful organizations, work to build a stronger community, and give back to their fellow community members. And whereas, it is fitting and proper for Giving Tuesday, and on every day, to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Indianola. And whereas, Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that I, Dan Pepper, Mayor of the City of Indianola, who are in behalf of the citizens of Indianola, do hereby proclaim November thirty, twenty twenty-one, to be Giving Tuesday Day in the City of Indianola. In witness whereof, I appear unto, set my hand and seal this fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one. All right, on to old business. First up, Amendment Number Six to the Hillcrest Downtown Unified Urban Renewal Plan. We need to have a public hearing on a proposed Amendment Number Six to the Hillcrest Downtown Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the City of Indianola, State of Iowa. Second, okay. Jackie, please. Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. We'll let Charlie go first to explain what's going on.
Mayor, Members of Council, Charlie Selle, Community Economic Development Director. We've done a few amendments to the Hillcrest Tiff. This is Amendment Number Six that we're looking at this evening. It does two things. First, it amends the parameters set for the Cementec Development Agreement that staff has been working on with that company, and then also adds an urban renewal project for TS Investments LLC, also known as Phillips Four. That's what they're doing business as, who is building a new building out on North Ninth Street currently. We had a consultation meeting with the affected tax jurisdictions, which is Warren County and the Indianola School District that was held on October twenty-fifth to twenty-one. I'm in this room at ten o'clock in the morning, and nobody did attend, so we did not have any comments on that. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's pretty common that anymore that they're not showing up.
I think I've been all but one, and Andy took my place, and I know maybe he showed up that one either, so.
I mean, I know there's conversation. I know Ryan's had conversations with R and I know that they're all in favor of growth, so that's a good thing. I just want to make sure that people are still listening. Right, exactly.
Anybody else here wishing to speak on this issue? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none?
Motion closed. Second.
Jackie? Councilmember Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder? Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're now out of a public hearing, moving into resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting the Amendment Number Six to the Hillcrest Downtown Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Second. Questions, comments? Jackie, please. Councilmember Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. On to nineteen oh nine South K Street. We have a public hearing regarding a request to rezone property located at nineteen oh nine South K Street from the A-one zoning district to the R-one zoning district.
Second.
Okay. Jackie? Councilmember Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. Let's start with Charlie.
Okay, this property is, as you noted, is located along South K Street, just south of the existing Deer Creek subdivision, approximately, just actually a little bit over eighty acres. You can see outlined here in the two blue squares. The proposed rezoning is requested to facilitate a future residential development. It is a rezoning request from the A-one zoning district to the R-one zoning district. The city's comprehensive plan does identify the property as low-density residential, which calls for two to five dwelling units per acre. The comprehensive plan also calls for a future minor arterial road that would connect from South K Street to the west towards R sixty-three. So any development that is reviewed on this property will look to include such a road in that process. Looking at utilities, there is a proper sanitary sewer and water service in the area to facilitate this development, and no concerns with either one of those. So with that, if there are any questions on the request, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody else wishing to speak about nineteen oh nine South K Street during this public hearing? So please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none?
Second.
Jackie, please. Councilmember Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Then first consideration of a request from diligent development to rezone property located at nineteen oh nine South K Street from A-one zoning district to R-one zoning district.
Move to approve. Second.
Questions, comments? Jackie, please. Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Schroder? Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is resolution approving the updated fee schedule to include residential rental inspections.
Second.
Charlie, please.
Really quick on this one. We did discuss this at the first consideration of the ordinance to adopt the rental inspection program. So this has been discussed with council previously, but the action that is in front of you now, after the ordinance is adopted, is to update the fee schedule to reflect this. So as discussed, the fee that we are proposing is essentially seventy-five dollars, which would cover the first unit, and then an additional thirty dollars on top of that for every additional unit you have after the first. So with that single-family dwelling, seventy-five dollars, two-family dwellings, also known as duplexes, would be that one oh five, that's seventy-five plus the thirty, and then I think the rest of it kind of explains itself as we look through there for both townhouses and multifamilies. So any questions on that? Be happy to answer them.
And that's every two years, right?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that.
No, no, that's fine. I talked about it multiple times.
Questions?
Thank you.
Jackie, please. Councilmember Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is Iowa Avenue Paving Project. We have a resolution amending Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash two five one by adopting reduction in assessable costs for the East Iowa Avenue Paving Project.
Move.
Second. AP?
Aye. Man, Council, this is AP Public Works Director. Last council meeting, you have approved the final completion of the East Iowa Paving Project. In this agenda packet, you have the final schedule of assessments. What this will do is your final action item towards approving or levying the taxes needed, assessments needed for this project. What I want to note is that the final assessments have come down significantly than what was initially presented, because we received grant money to cover half of the construction cost for this project. So property owners will be sent out notices, and they will have about thirty days to pay for it, or if not, it'll be assessed today taxes.
Questions, comments for AP?
So they don't know at this point that it's going to be less than what they first thought.
Well, I don't think they know about that.
All right, Jackie, please.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Then we need a resolution adopting, adopting and levying final schedule of assessments and providing for the payment thereof for the East Iowa Avenue Paving Project.
Second.
Questions, comments? Jackie, please. Councilmember Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder? Southall?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. On to new business. Development agreement with Cementec. We need to have a public hearing regarding a development agreement with Cementec.
Move open a public hearing. Second.
Jackie? Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, the city staff, along with our partners at the Ingrid and Moon Partnership, have been working with Cementec and their CEO for a couple of years now. They were planning a expansion project, so we're finally at the point where they were able to pull the trigger on that, on the first phase of that. So this is a development agreement that would utilize Tiff funds to help offset some of those costs. As you know, Cementec is a very large, very important business in our industrial park. It brings in a lot of revenue from property taxes, but also are a global supplier of machinery. So it's a will commence payments on June first, twenty twenty-six, and then payments earlier of June first, twenty forty, or by the date that the maximum aggregate has been.
Questions or comments for Ryan? Anybody else wishing to speak about the development agreement with Cementec? So please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none? Motion, close public hearing. Second. Jackie, please. Councilmember Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're out of the public hearing, and on to resolution approving a development agreement with Cementec.
Move. Second.
Questions, comments?
This is a good thing. You know, I mean, it's, I know they've been, they've been busting at the seams and continue to be that way, so I don't know what their timeframe is on expanding, but hopefully soon, and looking forward to keeping them around here and growing in our community. That's, that's an awesome thing, and appreciate them working with us on this.
You mentioned there's an average of a hundred jobs.
Yes. Yeah, they've added, and they're, they're hungry for more. I mean, that's something that we're seeing with across all industries is the lack of a workforce. So we've tried to put them in touch with Greater Moon Partnership, DMAC, and some other partnerships that we have to help them fill that gap. Housing is a big thing for them. So we've talked with them about some of the things that we've been doing. But, you know, Councilmember Parker, you talked about the expansion here, you know, with the, with East Iowa. That's really made a huge impact on the expansion of that industrial park. Recently, some of the ground sold. So that's looking like that will be developed here soon to the east, so which is a tremendous benefit to our residents in the suburbs.
Jackie, please. Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. On to resolution approving an agreement with Iowa DOT for maintenance and repair of primary roads in municipalities. AP? I'm sorry. AP?
Thank you. Man, Council, we got an agreement from the Iowa DOT, which is renewed every five years. So this was just renewing and you've again, the same agreement that we had previously. Doesn't change any of the responsibilities, keeps the same responsibilities with the DOT and the city. I kind of summarized this in the slide, what we, we are responsible for.
To just be clear, they're responsible for Highway ninety-two, and they're responsible for Jefferson Way, which is Highway sixty-five, sixty-nine.
Correct. So they are primarily responsible for the pavement. Some pavement markings, no removal. That's their on, on Highway ninety-two and Highway sixty-five, sixty-nine. Everything else outside the pavement itself falls under hours we're responsible for the storm sewer, traffic signals, anything outside of the pavement too, so.
I just think it's always good as we get into the snow season, people understand who's supposed to be plowing those roads, because they're busy, and it's not us. Good. Other questions, comments for AP? Thanks, AP. Jackie, please. Councilmember Hewland?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Southall?
Aye.
Marchant?
Aye.
Motion carries. On to residential recycling. We need a resolution approving an amendment to the residential recycling contract between Waste Management of Iowa and the City of Indianola. Second. Okay.
Mayor, Members of Council, as you know, Waste Management provides recycling collection services within the city of Indianola. They came to us and requested that their extension of their contract be, their contract be extended for another three years. We've had a really, say fantastic, but we had a really good relationship with Amon Taylor, who's local resident. These are contact with Waste Management, and they've been doing an outstanding job for the residents of Indianola, so we recommend that the city, the city council approve an extension of that contract for another three years.
Questions?
Comment? I would, I would echo the comment on Amon. He has been very helpful, even with the Land Bill Committee, and I know Glenn has been attesting that.
You send him any questions, any issues that we had with residents, and he takes care of them.
Agreed, agreed, great.
Well, the question I had is, they came to us when things were tight for them, and they asked for more money, and now that things are going really well for them, that they're getting their costs down. I think I know my answer. It's not a rhetorical question.
I can ask.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
Mr. Taylor's in the audience.
You know, and one that I anticipated, right? Because the last time I was here, I was asking for a ninety-four cent increase, right? Because China had thrown the world upside down on recycling. So we're back asking now because things are good, because we're willing to extend it, right? If, if we had had a contract ending back then, we may not have been willing to extend it without significantly revitalizing the language. And so now that things are good, actually, today is American Recycle Day. Don't know if you guys knew that? Yeah, good day to do this. We're back without asking for any extraordinary increase. So I don't know, I'll field any questions you have, but we want to propose it to you when we're willing to extend it. Because I can tell you, over the last three years, there have been multiple contracts we have not been willing to extend without significant lawyers rereading, rewriting.
Right. That's really.
My understanding is that the profit from recycling, I mean, where you guys sell the stuff, has really picked up compared to what it used to be. It is. It's very, right now, it's up.
And then it has been down.
Right.
Yeah.
If, you know, inflation goes away, supply chain issues go away. That's what's driving the high price right now. We expect it will go back down in mid twenty twenty-two. No guarantees. I can't predict the future any better than the forecasters, but we believe that the current high prices are because of that constraint on the other supply chain issues. And so the commodity is there to replace that, where once that supply chain constraint goes away across the American economy, you won't have that same high demand. the commodity is there to replace that, where once that supply chain constraint goes away across the American economy, you won't have that same high demand.
Other comments, questions? Jackie, please.
Councilmember Hewland.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Kling.
Hi.
Schroder. Southall.
Hi.
Marchant.
Hi.
Carries. Thank you.
Andy told me to stay up for the next one. You have any questions, but didn't want to make more extra steps. Uh, the next item.
First consideration of an ordinance amending recycling. Second.
Okay, um, the next uh, item is during, in our current contract, we had, do have an increase in the rates of eleven cents, just eleven cents each month. Um, normally we increase our rate um, to the customer when Waste Management asks the city to increase the rate is sort of a pass-through so that we um, can stay stable in that residential uh, cycling fund. So the eleven cent increase is going to be added on to the monthly rate for the customer.
As he said, this is something already in the current contract. It's just really a matter of the city wanting to make sure they're covering the increased costs as they, as someone's residents.
Councilmember Marchant.
Hi.
Hewland.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Kling.
Hi.
Schroder. Southall.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you both. On to resolution referring a rezoning application for four oh four South Jefferson Way Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Okay. Charlie, please.
Um, yes, so uh, similar to the rezoning that was just approved on first consideration here this evening, if you recall, a few meetings back, we brought that forward as a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission under our new code. Um, any rezoning application first goes to council for referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Some quick background on this one. If you can see here, just between East Third Avenue and East Fourth Avenue along South Jefferson Way, so Highway ninety-two is up here to the north. We've got a single-family dwelling located on that parcel right there. Um, they're in the process of, process of selling that single-family dwelling. Uh, because of that, um, they're fearful because of the zoning on the property, that financing for any new property owner could be um, hard to get, if not impossible to get. So they're asking to rezone it uh, to residential. It actually does fall within line of their comp plan that calls for this to be a residential area. And as you see, there's residential zoning just to the rear of it that um, would not create spot zoning. So staff would recommend that this does get referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Makes sense.
Councilmember Hewland.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Kling.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Southall.
Hi.
Marchant.
Hi.
Motion carries. On to a resolution amending a contract with Snyder and Associates for pavement improvements on West Boston Avenue, North F Street and West Clinton Avenue.
Move it through.
Second. Okay. AP.
Very thanks. Just wanted to give you a background. Uh, several months ago, you have uh, looked into possible COVID nineteen stimulus funding that, that uh, that can be used uh, towards improvements on Boston Avenue, several locations, Boston Avenue, F Street, Clinton, to name a few. Uh, and then back in June, you approved a contract with Snyder and Associates to prepare thirty-person plans for uh, West Boston Avenue and F Street. So uh, Snyder and Associates has completed the preliminary plans. I just wanted to show you what they have found. Basically, there is a lot of utility infrastructure that's uh, either failed or, or way past its design life. The storm sewer, sanctuary sewer, and the water uh, is all way past its design life. And uh, they found out that the segment between B and F, um, the pavement has also failed. The cost estimate, uh, the engineer's cost estimate is roughly about one point three million dollars. Uh, and then we are also recommending to do half a block north and south of uh, Boston Avenue on F Street, because in order to accommodate the sanctuary sewer that has also failed in that same location, where we are coming up with a fast estimate of roughly about seven thousand dollars. So so these, these lines shows you all the utility that's needed as a part of these improvements. We also looked at another location on Clinton Avenue where the, these uh, the water main has failed. And uh, we are estimating, the engineer's estimate is roughly about four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So now, when we looked at all the options, we are coming at roughly about two point three million dollars in order to do all the three options that I just presented here. And uh, we just come, uh, we also came to know that we are roughly going to get about two point four million dollars in uh, American Rescue Plan, um, which is basically for utility and pavement improvements as a part of the utilities. So we as a staff are recommending to do all three options. When the construction bid is going out, we are going to make sure that Clinton Avenue is added as an alternate bid, not as a base bid in order to um, factor for the bid fluctuation that may happen. So um, with this uh, council agenda packet, you will be approving the uh, the, the final design and the construction inspection required by, for this project.
Questions, comments?
Definitely needed. Yeah, basically we got the uh, yeah, Boston's pretty rough.
I wanted to say again, great planning. We were ready when this money came and we were told it was going to be available. We had the data. We knew which streets we needed to go after. We put it together very quickly, worked with Snyder. It's all very exciting. So this is a great add to our community. So thank you for being here.
I don't know how long you've been here. I, I really wanted to add my thanks too, because I had lots of concerns from residents in that area, which of course is Ward Three. So I am very happy to hear all of this and I'm glad that it's moving forward and I think um, attention to detail has been taken care of. So I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
And thanks to Snyder Associates. Great work. Appreciate it.
All right, Jackie.
Councilmember Schroder.
Hi.
Southall.
Hi.
Marchant.
Hi.
Hewland.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Kling.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thanks, AP. On to other business. City managers report. Brian Waller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for the resolution. Um, it has been a tremendous honor to be part of this community and to serve as city manager. There's a quote, Steve Jobs said, "Great things in business are never done by one person. They're done by a team of people." And I can honestly say that this is one of the best teams I've ever worked with. I'm greatly appreciative of everybody, especially you all. I've been in local government for twenty years and I have a tremendous amount of respect for people that choose to run for office to put themselves out there with zero recognition, zero compensation, all the headaches, all the criticisms, all while you're trying to do what's best for the community. So thank you all for your service to this community. It is your vision and your leadership that allowed us to do a lot of the great things that continue to happen in this community. I'm proud of the team and I'm proud of where um, this organization is and this community is. As I, as I exit and um, leave it to somebody else to manage this great team. We've certainly talked, you know, Robert was here earlier to talk about the audit. The audit is clean on it. It's a great audit. Our credit score is, as you all know, has improved over the years. Our financial policies, the budget awards, uh, the planning in, in the infrastructure. And you all are not solving the topics that, that are at the federal level. Um, and while you receive criticism for um, voting unanimously unanimously sixty-eight or whatever times that was, you're, you're paving streets, you're putting public safety officers on the street, you're doing stuff to um, keep services available to this community. And you have supported us. You've come prepared. You read your packets, you ask great questions. Um, and you are here every meeting. And so well, some may see you only taking a vote in one particular meeting and they don't get to see the multiple months or the multiple meetings or the multiple years that you spent discussing uh, and providing guidance on a topic. So so thank you for that. I know it's not easy and I greatly appreciate it. And I know staff does too. Can't say enough about the staff. Um, and I was talking to Courtney, our HR manager, earlier today. And we were talking about just that there's not enough time to say thank you to everybody in the community, to our team members, to all of you. And uh, I have one more thing. I, I just um, want to say thank you to my family, because they are the very reason why I do everything that I do. And I appreciate you um, all for letting me take phone calls on a Sunday, dealing with city business during our dinners. You guys are the best. We want you all very much. Thanks, bud. Thank you.
I'm glad we can bring you along.
All right, let's receive and file correspondence from October twenty-ninth and November fifth, twenty twenty-one, weekly updates from the city manager, Brian Waller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. No?
I'm not going to let it be announced. Just a quick minute. Um, back in two thousand and eleven, Craig and I both were asked to run for city council to put change in place in the community and move things forward by some business people. Um, we were successful in our election and in working through that process. Um, Pam was already on council and, and joined us in that. And we, Ryan, you're our third city manager. Um, since I've been on council and Pam and Greg have been on council. Um, you've brought us farther than anybody else and I thank you for that. Came in full of energy and excitement. Think you had an idea of the direction you wanted to go. Uh, and then you met with us, realized the direction we wanted to go. Most of it was probably similar. Um, you did everything we asked. You took what we had ideas, worked with us, and then you, you put the staff together. The, the, the staff that you have now, this team is phenomenal. And, and um, they do a great job. And the best part is, is we have had good councils to step back and get out of their way and let them do their job. And I brought this up before Dr. Rundle years ago, when I got elected to sit, uh, school board, called me and he'd been a school board member and and he told me to come in, he was going to give me a free teeth cleaning, but I had to listen to him while I was in and giving me sage advice. And, and one of the things he said is, John, I clean teeth and you build signs. The school, the schools, the teachers teach. You get out of the way and let them do the thing, you set policy. And that's what we've done here. And you've taken that policy and you've moved it. And uh, I appreciate that. And thank you to your family because um, it's been a wild ride. Um, unfortunately, but it's been a great ride. Um, you, you've brought us farther than anything I would have ever imagined. And but it's, we're just beginning. I mean, it just, the momentum we have in our community is incredible and, and uh, as I told you before on the phone, we were, we were looking, looking for you when we found you and we'll keep on looking. So hopefully, you know, the bar has been set and, and we'll move on and we'll be fine. And, and I know you'll do the same where you're moving on to too. So again, thank you for all you've done and.
Last one. Thanks.
All right, folks, our final other business is we need to enter into closed session in accordance with Iowa Code section twenty-one point five, one. I, to discuss the purchase, maybe it might be J. My mistake. To discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate, only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. Second. Jackie.
Councilmember Parker.
Hi.
Kling.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Southall.
Hi.
Marchant.
Hi.
Hewland.
Hi.
Motion carries. We're going into closed session in just a few minutes. And then coming out of that, we, all we have left is to adjourn. So thank you for being here tonight. We greatly appreciate it.